My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to do tonight is start out with our public hearings, we have two of them. I'll take roll call please.
What?
Here.
What?
Here.
Here.
Jamie.
Here.
Here.
Here. Today is Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014, the time is 7:00 P.M. And we will open our public hearing first on the comprehensive plan funding. And that is the amended resolution 2014-10. Yeah, would you like to come in and present that place?
Thank you. Again, my name is Deb Lilly. I work for Administrative Resources Association. And the city in July submitted an application for a comprehensive plan to the Office of Community and Welfare requesting $40,000, which is an eligible request for that type of project. The state got back with me and the mayor and said that because the comprehensive plan that you currently have is only seven years old, they didn't feel like they wanted to consider $40,000 for another plan. But they did want to help and they would consider a revision, a revised application, a revised resolution for $20,000. So, that being said, they did require that we have another public hearing. And that is what we're doing here this evening. The intent, if you choose to go forward, the intent is to have the application and all the rest of the required documentation in by the 12th of this month. And therefore, they would make a decision by the end of the month. So, that is why I'm here. Again, I will go over basically what the new resolution will state and what the plan will consist of. The plan is, would still consist of the same area items in the last public hearing that we talked about. Public buildings, public facilities, including the community centers, libraries and neighborhood units, education included, including location and extent of schools, sewers, sanitation and drainage, public and private utilities availability, housing and population densities, areas needing redevelopment and conservation, economic development, and the central business district, other ways, including bridges, subways, parkways, and others, air, land and water pollution, flood control and irrigation, transportation, parking back, land utilization, conservation, energy, water supply, and policies and objectives for future land use and development. Because the OKRA office will consider $20,000 in grant funds, that would mean the city would have to come up with additional funding. They are still working with CHA. CHA has agreed to do the plan for $50,000. So, they would need an additional $30,000 for that. The administrative fees for our services would be reduced because ours are paid on a percentage of grant requests. So, ours would go from 3,200 to 1,600. So, the total project cost would be $51,600, $31,600 coming from added funds. So, that's where we are. I do have, I'm sorry, I do have a sign in sheet, so I'd like all the council and everyone else to sign in real quick, please.
So, I think at the current time, we can hold up. Anyone in the audience who could do a statement in regards to this matter of comprehensive plan and the grants that we are applying for in the United States?
Scott?
What do they, what do they see as a life of, of one of the plans? You say our last one was like seven years old. What do they want to see? Ten years, fifteen years, twenty years?
Well, it's interesting because seven years is actually a little bit longer than what they like to see. They like to see five years. If your plan is five years or less, you have a better chance of getting tax credit developers and that kind of thing. But I don't think there's a true designated.
Please, carry on. That's what I've always heard, five years is not standard. I mean, if there's a question on, on, on any community, you know, county attacks, just the grants that we apply to.
Just came back, solved the explanation a bit. Tried to ask, got asked because I thought that we were going somewhat on bad recognition. And it may just be a good excuse.
Well, we were thinking it was an executive decision. We did sit down with them and thought Honda plant certainly was a big part that they understand. But they decided to go this route. But they do want to help, so.
So, I will be held for the first time. I think this council, if we need to proceed with the comprehensive plan, so. Yes. Okay, we'll get, we'll proceed. Anything else in the audience? Counsel? We've brought down, we're taking a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
May I have your signature on this?
Sure. Who's to the next public hearing? Budget ordinances, 2013-9, 2014. Okay, that's what it says. Public hearing is open. As to the budget ordinances for this year 2015, budget year 2015. Oh, yes, we need a roll call.
What?
Here.
What?
Here.
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 Jamie.
Here.
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 Public hearing is open. Budget ordinances, proposed budget ordinances for the year 2015. Counsel? Public, audience? Anything, any statements or concerns or questions regarding 2015 budget? If, last chance. Here now, I take a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Second. We also have the one on the schools. It's pretty many school budget.
That's not, so.
Roll call here is good. Okay, that is true, that is true.
Service administration with the advertising for them. So, they're gonna, we want to hit and did the advertising and got it sent here. So, the timeframe for them will be the 10. September 10 at 7:00.
Okay, here, council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014, the time is 7:00 P.M. Director meeting, great for common council's call order. Just outside of the process we had.
What?
What?
Here.
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 Jamie.
Still here.
Here.
He stole my line. Here.
We need appropriate minutes from August 4th, 2014, council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Council? There isn't any other, I take motion to accept them as received.
All right. Second.
Oh, any further discussion? Here now, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same side, motion passes, thank you. New business, Gary Murray, second final reading of August 2014-8, Minnesota U.S. 3 and 4, instead of 4.
That is the two lots located at the northeast corner of Moscow on 150. The bank that owned those was generous about to donate the right away for the project. And it turned and asked that we change that zoning from R2 to B3. That gave a command in certain nation, playing commission, and unanimously on the perjury last month. Any questions? If I ask?
I'm going to take a motion to pass on the second reading.
Second.
Further discussion? Those, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same side, motion passes, thank you. Next is the first reading of 2014-14, amendment to 2004-1 on inspection cost. What our city is going to do on buildings and ambitions, construction.
Construction, yes. Last year during the budget session, he had been getting paid $20 in inspection for a number of years. Last year, that was raised to $25. And it is proposed in this year's budget to pay him $27.50 per inspection. And in order to cover our costs, we're proposing changing our rate per inspection to $30 per inspection. So, that is the changes in the fees for inspections.
That, that's the only change?
Yes.
Yes, to cover, to cover the costs. The application fees have not changed, it was just the inspection fees.
The apartment complex, I mean, each one, there's a few of them that raised and ranked.
Right, but if, some of them required four or five inspections. So, we just took the number of inspections that are in there and if it was five, we multiplied times thirty. So, the apartments went up, but basically the only change is it is the $30 inspection every time you get something.
The, the ten, ten cent per foot on single family?
That has not changed.
And so, accessory buildings and decks, that's what's changed to $30?
Yes, the application fees all stayed the same. There's the inspection fees, so. Just the inspection fees for all classifications changed to $30.
And where was the last time we changed this?
I think it was on four.
Uh, is it not, it wasn't type five?
Yeah, it is.
Four, it's $1.00.
Yeah.
Is it amending on four?
Same group?
Any questions, council? Here now, I take a motion to, in first reading, August 2014-4, amendment to 2004-1, we will break the inspection cost. That would be 2014-14, how would they, okay. It was 2004-1, amended to 2014-14.
Hey, so who?
Any further discussion? Here now, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same side, motion passes, thank you. And then, Gary, would you want to do this, do you want to tip, do this on the fair housing ordinance?
As part of the application for the comprehensive plan grant, we were required to submit our fair housing ordinance to OKRA. And they have a model ordinance on their website, which is updated in language which they recommended that we adopt. And I don't know exactly what language that was.
I think it's like section nine on familial status summary.
So, we have suggested adopting the viable ordinance that they have on their website, which is what hasn't been presented.
We had no ordinance before this?
We did.
We did or didn't?
We did. And we forwarded that one to OKRA with the grant application. And they suggested that we revise our ordinance for the different language that they have. And a lot of times it had been updated since we last did this.
So, what'd you say?
So, that was 2003 was your original, it's been eleven years.
It said section nine, so it's just an insertion of that.
That was the primary change, yes.
Okay. So, why would this be a limit to the time amendments? Because there's no language, it's changed in this new bill. So, what about the old ordinance? Is it still going to be on the books? I mean, that's, that's my question. If we, if we enter this as a new ordinance, we have both ordinances. Or is it going to be amended one to be this? Unless you, ordinances go with, with the year, but.
Well, I mean, it would be, the old ordinance would be superseded by the new ordinance. So, whatever the newest, most current ordinance is on that particular issue is what would be the governing law. The only thing that would be a particular, you know, pitfall that you could run into is if there is something that is specifically, that is set forth in the old ordinance that is not addressed in the new. Because that would still remain in effect.
We tried to go through and figure out what changes there were. We just knew that based on what Deb had researched, she had definitely adopted fair housing ordinance.
Well, this can replace.
Yeah, I believe the old ordinance, the one that was adopted in 2003 was also the, the model ordinance for that time period. So, I would guess that they, that these all line up. Now, I will admit, I have not gone through and correlated the old ordinance to the new ordinance. But I have no problem recommending a model ordinance that's been created by the housing community. I mean, I guess I, you know, say I could probably, the ordinance, I'm just thinking, if we're not going to amend the other one, then we should rescind the other one. Would be later in the future, Tom. Yeah.
Next month?
In terms of, it provides some exemptions. Okay, it was only due 9/5/3, I don't really have time to go look at it. Didn't take that, just came this weekend, so it was a bunch of different files, just a bunch. Didn't find time to do it, but. And I, I'm running it again, because things gotta get sent in by itself, yeah. This is what, what I just aggravated about getting something with very little time to give it. Yeah, like you, Chris, I, it's probably a little Google when you're ready, I understand. I just was curious as to what are the exemptions? Where I know that it provides for, most of this covers public housing and sale, real estate and so forth. Individual homes. And duplexes, are they exempted?
Do you have anything else that needs?
I, I can't, I'm not a legal expert on that, I don't know. I do know, however, that that is the ordinance that they will accept to grant application.
Yeah, I know, I know where to go, I know where to go. Guess what, it'd been nice if we had this, you know, week ago, two weeks ago, when, I don't know when you found out about it. But if we'd had some time to, I could have just taken a look at this. It may not make any difference, it may not make any change.
What was your specific question on?
Well, it says exemptions are defined 22953. Included active organizations set forth in community, community, talks about religious organizations, associations, society, nonpartisan, so on. And housing of persons, there's an exception for like senior housing, so, yeah.
Okay, I have the code. I pulled the code out, so.
It's probably lengthy. And I.
Yeah, it is.
It's a whole. Chapter there. So, that's fine, I'll, I don't think there's anything really to add there.
Change vote turn on next month's agenda to rescind that.
It just like, it cleans everything.
More questions, council, that's the answer. Not entertain a motion to, first reading, 2014-15, fair housing ordinance.
So. Second.
Further discussion? Here now, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same side. I'd like to do the second reading as well. So, get this in process, just grant, as much as possible, further discussion, this is what concerns.
Make motion, suspend the rules.
Second, suspended.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same side, motion passes. Any motion for the second reading?
I would make a motion for the second reading of 2014-15, fair housing. To be passed on separate.
Need a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here now, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same side, motion passes. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, the way they are, discussion, amending the resolution 2014-10 of the public hearing.
Yes, the resolution that is before you now is a requirement because the amount of local match in there has changed. Because the grant request has changed as well. So, this is an application or a resolution to apply for and commit local match for the comprehensive plan application, any amount of $31,600 from the added funds.
Questions concerned, council? Few explanations, just to be mindful. If there are any questions or concerns, I entertain a motion to go on, amended resolution 2014-10.
Second.
Just motion to make the tear second, here. Any further discussion? Here now, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same side, motion passes, thank you. Mr. Mark Copeland, our EDC director.
Good evening. I hope you, that you have the packet that served as a overview for the update that I'm going to provide for you. It just says EDC quarterly report at the top, and there's some information with that. I want to point out first that job momentum continues to be in very good shape in Greensboro, Decatur County. The article, very interesting, it was done by Boris Logway. He keeps up quite closely with the Department of Workforce Development and how their information comes out, disseminated. In that article, what would be the one, two, three, the third highlighted section down, talks about Greensboro Community Schools recently completed a new vocational center next to high school, providing curriculum that aligns more closely with the needs of local business. And then, one, two, three, the third highlight below that, the county's unemployment rate in July was 5.1%. Down from 6.9% a year earlier and down from 5.4% in June. That's a critical need that we'll have as we're reaching this 5% level now. And that is that people, there are those that have left the workforce that will be going back into the workforce and some of the statistics are showing that too, statewide and nationwide. And we're probably, our hope really is to get down to around 3%, which most economists would say is negative unemployment at that point. You've got your hardcore unemployables that you're just not going to find a job for at that point. Maybe people that are disabled, something along those lines. But to get that next 2%, and maybe even the people that have left the workforce that are the adults now in the workforce. I'm saying not kids coming out of high school, but maybe forty, fifty-year-old people and older that could use new skills in the new manufacturing environment that we're in now to be able to get a job, a family wage job. So, we should, we should be very happy with the vocational ed school that we have to address these kind of issues. The vocational ed expansion, I should say, address this kind of issue. Because that's very critical in economic development right now. On that second item, it concerns a question that Councilman Tebby had asked during my last quarterly update. And Councilman, I tried every way in the world I could with the Department of Workforce Development. And they have their ways of, of providing statistics. And we were talking about those 1,190 jobs that were created, what was the nature of the job, what, you know. And I begged, borrowed and rotted for, for the report that you see, this is Decatur County 2013 Job Order Report. That is what I got back from, and these occupations are alphabetized here. That's their, you see job openings, job orders and job referrals. I like the second item down, assemblers and fabricators. Well, they had, they said there was 463 job openings and they made almost 200 referrals. So, we know that in that kind of situation, probably an indicator of manufacturing jobs. And we know we had a lot of good ed manufacturing jobs that were created in 2013. I'll make a, a comment about one in particular in just a minute, it was a highlight.
So, can I, can I ask you to clarify this? Because I looked at it and I had a little trouble deciphering everything there. Little job orders, does that mean that that four, using that same assemblers and fabricators, all of their job orders are four? job orders of four, does that mean there were four different manufacturers that requested help? And totally four hundred sixty-three openings? Is that what those job orders means?
A job order, yes, a job order came from a manufacturer to the Department of Workforce Development, probably Region Nine office. Now, they track the openings also that they say, that companies say that they have. They do that tracking, so they, in their means for doing that, they tracked four hundred sixty-three job openings in this particular job category.
So there might have been other openings in addition to those four that you were...
Okay, it could have been, yes, sure.
Okay.
And then, you know, even in the third case of the referrals, they just had people that came into their office that they were able to make referrals to those job openings. And you can, you can pretty much go down the list, it's the one that's building, cleaning workers, all others, thirty job openings, they referred nineteen, but they're only getting, you know, they say there was only two job orders. With those job orders, there may be openings from companies, but they just don't want to use them as their employment.
Okay, is there any way of getting at the compensation for these different types of positions, whether it's, you know, the average or median maybe, or the... Can you order to kind of get a sense of where the, where the pay scales are?
Sure. To do that, you just about have to go to every business that hired and say, what is your classification and compensation schedule? What you have to do here is extrapolate from this, this information that you have and what kind of jobs are being offered, and if you know that you've got manufacturing jobs that are being provided, generally, they're the highest paying, best benefit jobs that are in the, in the market. Now, there are white collar jobs, of course, that are higher paying than your, than you start, than your, than your your first job in the manufacturing environment, your entry level job, is what I'm trying to say. There are not a whole lot of white collar jobs that look like they're on this list, but in a lot of cases, in manufacturing environments, that happens where people are promoted.
Right, right.
And that's what really, that would be really difficult to track.
In terms of these job openings, four hundred sixty-three, so when then, somebody reports to them that they have openings, they don't report what the wage scale is? When they refer people to X, Y, Z, they just, here X, Y, Z has an opening, and they don't have any idea what they're referring?
What they tend to do is give a range, say, you know, this is where the entry level position is, and it goes up to this level. And depending on the job, it could be a twenty thousand dollar range.
Right.
So we just have to assume that the manufacturing type jobs are going to be the higher paying jobs, and then anything that looks like a white collar type job would probably, most likely be higher.
So the four hundred, or the two hundred fifty-seven new jobs that were announced by Valio are not reflected in these figures here?
No, because that was in 2014. Now, let me, let me go back just a second. They made some announce, they made an announcement the year before, yes, I think that's correct.
Two hundred and nine jobs.
Yeah, that was the year before they did, so they are really moving quickly.
But part of that plan too is, when we asked Valio about that.
I know, this last time.
It was other jobs that were falling off, and they were just replacing, so it wasn't two hundred and nine new employees. It might be a hundred new employees, a hundred and nine transferred over to another line or...
Right, and this one, the latest one, is more new, all new stuff.
That's what, I remember, when we asked him about that, that's what he...
So those, those two hundred jobs, where do you think they fell, in assemblies, or did they fall in under...
Yeah, the production workers on the last page.
Yeah.
Five hundred as well.
Five hundred, that's, yeah, that's the one.
Those two?
They fall in there, some of them niche.
Yeah, those two categories, right.
I think that, we're getting more clear of the discussion with Hitachi when they were here with their extension. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but during the debate meeting, Terry May, for each new position, there was going to be another one engineer for every twelve workers, or twelve assembly workers, something like that. I don't know, maybe, I didn't recall here and then.
Yeah, and like Mark and Jamie said, there's some jobs being filled, one line together now, these two are fifty-seven jobs, and that's fifteen thousand, those are one jobs.
Okay, moving on to the existing business services category of this update. And we've already talked about it, can you folks know that one of the highlights of the second quarter was that announcement of two hundred fifty-seven new jobs and a twenty-seven point eight capital investment by the end of 2015 that Valio was referring to? So, you know, they're, they're moving, they're moving strongly, and it wouldn't surprise me if they needed more facility before long. I've talked to a couple of their workers, they said they're pretty crowded. So maybe we'll be able to help with that before long. Interestingly, in existing business services, we're working with two other local manufacturers for possible expansions. They're new, and they both came out of the Business Custom Conveyor that was out of business, that was, that had to leave business. And one of them is International Material Handling, the other is called Heritage Industrial Contract. And they both do a lot of conveyor system work. Moving from that, on October third, I hope as many of you as possible can come, we're having our Fourth Annual Business Appreciation Day. We're having a slight format change from years past, we're trying to make it more friendly and more accessible to folks. We're going to have it at one location, that'll be at the North Branch Golf Course. We'll have a luncheon there that day, start at eleven. The speaker is Gary Dick from Inside Indiana Business, and I have not had the opportunity to hear him speak. I did speak with him on the phone, but I understand he's a very interesting speaker, so... And more and more people seem to be looking at his online Inside Indiana Business and his shows about Indiana business on the weekend. So he's our speaker this year, and then we'll have a golf tournament at North Branch right after that. And we're also encouraging people to come and come to the luncheon by giving away some movie tickets here to Wool Theater. So, and we're covering all those costs, it's just a way for us to show the existing businesses how much we appreciate them in this community and how much they mean to the community. I do have a joint proclamation, same as I've done the last three years. This morning I was at the county commissioners meeting, and they made a motion that that day would be proclaimed as industry, or Business Appreciation Day by the county, and I hope that this is a joint resolution by city and county, and I hope we can have a motion and second that that day could be proclaimed as Business Appreciation Day. I've got a, the signatures of the commissioners, and I think the mayor can sign for the city, if you feel that's appropriate.
I think that we proclaim that day Business Appreciation Day. Greensburg, Decatur, yeah, and so on.
Yes.
Motion to look at it.
That's it?
For discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same side, motion passes.
And you folks will be receiving your invitation in a fathom we can have. And of course, I'll be bugging you if I don't hear back from you. Glenn always lets me know. Okay, in the new business development and attraction area, unfortunately, sometimes we are not able to win one. This company, J U W I O, which is pronounced U V, it's German, they make solar collectors. It's been another alternative energy source, and it was looking at a location in Westport. They are a developer contractor, and they did not meet the RFP requirements that Duke Energy had asked for this project. They could not do the connecting portion of the wires from the solar to their transmission line, to Duke's transmission lines that were asked by Duke Energy. So, they do a lot of work with Duke, but this one they happened to lose, and we had been very hopeful that we would win that, but we'll, we'll win others. Just wanted to update you on that, because I had mentioned it in my last quarter. The twenty-ninth through the thirty-first of July, went to Chicago with the state's Indiana Economic Development Corporation. It was very well done, they had fourteen, we had five calls for two days, and it really reinforced to me that we're doing right right now, we're putting the pieces together to attract new business. That's obviously the four hundred and seventy-five acre shovel-ready site that we're working on across from Honda at that interchange, the north side of the interchange. The vocational education, there's a couple of the site consultants there now who are saying that they want the superintendent of the school systems to be in on the negotiations with them, so they'll know what, how the workforce development situation is in the community. It's so closely related to the success of economic development within workforce development. Of course, we're going, we're getting down to that five percent level, a lot of communities are fortunate there, that a economy is showing a little bit of an uptick and resiliency. So workforce development is critical. With ourselves, at the EDC, we are having a major website upgrade. You'll be able to see that probably in about two weeks, the completed version of that. And they say that's critical too, because a lot of these consulting firms, I'll just give you the top one, Jones, Langlos South, that's the largest in the world, we met with them in Cincinnati, and they say, you know, Mark, a lot of what we do is to eliminate communities. If we don't have the information that we need, if you don't, if you don't show that on your site, or you're showing incorrectly what we're asking for, then you're probably going to be eliminated. So that's why we're doing this extensive upgrade of our website page, pages. And regarding the land development also, we had a big step forward last Thursday. Bless her heart, I think Toni Stille probably passed away that day or the next day, I can't remember, but she had always helped with the Schroeder family and getting them together, helping us get that signed. Maybe it was symbolic in a way, because they signed with us to go with our land marketing agreement on that day. And when the first one signed, we know, we're very sure that the second and third family was signed, so we'll have the complete four hundred seventy-five acres. We're very happy about that. Finally, at our EDC annual meeting, we had some new officers elected, and you see that on your sheet, who are new officers, our president, vice president, secretary of treasurer. So, any, I'd be, there's been a lot in this quarter going on, and I've had a fairly lengthy update with you, so if there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
What I'm most concerned about, like you asked, is how companies are doing that we've granted payments to, such as the nail company, how are they doing in their businesses?
Why you ask me that? I was called by Chris Felger, I think his name was, the finance officer, and he said that they're going strongly right now, they needed some very temporary warehousing space where they could put some of their product and then move it in. When they moved into that twenty thousand square foot building, it's out in the industrial park. So we had a good conversation, and letting know of some temporary warehousing space in Greensburg.
Have they purchased any new equipment yet?
That, I'm not sure of, I didn't ask Chris about that. Nah, he said, for the purpose of our purchasing new equipment, that's what he said, that's why they were moving that, yeah. Temporarily. Well, you can see what Hitachi's doing, I mean, they're, they have construction out there for a while. Valio, they're, I don't see how they won't, they can continue at this kind of rate without expanding the facility somewhat.
So, do you think they can take a trip to Detroit?
Yeah, I think you're right. Honda has been interestingly quiet going about their business. I know they have about twenty-three hundred employees now. I would think, Mr. Mayor, that the incentives that the state gave them for the training incentives to hire the original group out of twenty-one counties at some time have to expire, you know, because at that point, you had a one in twenty-one chance, if you were from Decatur County, of getting a job in Honda, which totaled up to about three hundred now. It's just simple math there, but I know for one thing, that there can be husband and wife work there, as long as they're not supervising each other, they could be working in different parts of the plant. They stopped that, that policy.
There are also, I think, within next year, most employees will be on fixed shift.
That's, that's exactly right, I have a neighbor that told, that mentioned that before, I'd heard it in the news, and he, he said that if he fixed shifts, it won't be rotating shifts, and they all, they all voted for that, you know, they're very much, almost unanimous for that. I don't know if they'll do, you know, maybe, you may have heard more than I have, or somebody may have, I don't know if they'll start the younger, the newer employees on the, you know, the late night shift, or the third shift, and start the older, you know, or try to nix people, probably, probably some kind of, I don't think that, some kind of nix. Of course, if they're doing well, then their OSL is going to be doing well too, as their logistics provider. That's about the ones I can think of right now. Oh, Kim County near Westport, Nippon Glass Americas, it's just got a new plant... Oh, in the county near Westport, Nippon Glass Americas, it's just gotten a new plant manager. So I'll be talking to him. Their H R person, Bonnie Han, said it's a local person. So that'll be good. The former plant manager was from New Jersey and I think he went back.
Any other questions, counsel? Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go to the next step, we had to have a discussion with the coworkers. And on this night, we proposed orders to see if we would have their support. Reason, only reason to have that was because there are responsible for the contracting insurance and that to get, to see better support and we did have their support announced today. Four members that were in attendance. And so at this time, I would like to ask for a vote to amend the agenda to include this. This is a timeless situation to save the city money in the future and give the people an opportunity to work in a relishable situation. Like you, for this discussion.
I'll make the motion, amend the agenda to include it.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, now those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those same side. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. We have orders prepared for this to add it to the, we got, we got two thousand dash sixteen to those who would like to do it. And I, I can't see you already have it, you haven't got that much time. But this is important to us and to the boys as well.